Okay, good evening, everybody. Um, it is now seven oh one and I'm going to begin roll call. Vice Chair George Sammon. Councilmember Juan Carlos Prado. Councilmember Everardo Rodriguez. Councilmember Niget Cersei. Councilmember Brooks Esser.
Here.
Councilmember Blair Whitney. Councilmember Kelly Percy. And Councilmember Kathleen Dally. Thank you. Now going to turn the time over to Tim for our next agenda item.
So at least annually and sometimes during the course of the program year, it becomes necessary for the council to take action to elect a chair and vice chair. We have an out of the the usual timing need to elect a new chair. So we put this on the agenda because it is a matter of council business that requires discussion and action. I'm happy to guide you through the procedures of doing this. But in essence, just to remind you, these slides are from the boards and commissions training that is offered to all the boards and commissions in the county about what the chair role looks like. Generally, it involves presiding at the meetings, directing the the progress through the agenda, acting as a traffic cop, about discussion, acknowledging speakers, et cetera. And then the vice chair performs all the same functions whenever the chair is unable to attend the meeting. Next slide, please. Additional duties that are required of the chair generally involve coordinating with staff in advance of the meetings, set the agenda and ensure that the business is well prepared for, calling the meetings to order and sometimes helping to frame the deliberations. Rarely, there's a need for the chair to actually interact with members of the public if there's a disruption or confusion about the procedural rules. So there is usually with with help of staff and the county attorney's office, sometimes a need just to give direction to people who don't frequently attend meetings to explain why our process looks the way that it does. So procedurally, the way things stand right now is that you have a need to elect a new chair. Mr. Sammon, I believe, is still the vice chair. If he's nominated for another position, then it would require a need to hold a vote on on vacancy. So what I would recommend is that you briefly consider whether or not you wish to nominate one of your members to be the chair or the remainder of the program year, and then I can help guide you in the way in which the the vote can be held if there are multiple candidates.
I have a question. Chair, when when would the regular election take place?
I think we did an election in. You remind me, I can't remember. January.
So this term will be from now into January?
Yes.
Thank you.
Through the, um, chair. I would like to consider nominating the vice chair for chair. Can I ask directly, would you be willing to do it within the year? We get a vice chair to back you up. I haven't heard that.
Sorry, um, through the chair, sorry, um, we, last year, we elected in February. What was the, was it, was the meeting that we elected a new chair?
Understood, but just to clarify, when we're doing this particular process, nominations don't technically require a second because they're not technically motions. So if someone wants to nominate, they're nominated whether or not there's a second. Generally, there is a tradition that a person who is nominated indicates whether or not they would accept. So it serves essentially as a second. But people can nominate themselves too, and that's not a problem.
So anyone want to volunteer for yards? For January, February?
I'm willing to go, I'm willing to defer to other. If I nominate them, if you don't like me, then you have to. I nominate Juan Carlos Prado.
I accept nomination.
Okay. But now I'm unclear about whether or not the idea was that you.
Yeah.
I always try to report, but then you get it.
All right, ordinarily, I would ask if there are any further nominations. Okay, if there are no further nominations, we hold a vote on the nominee. All those in favor of electing Juan Carlos Prado to be the chair through the remainder of the term, please indicate by saying hi. Any opposed, please indicate by saying no. The motion carries unanimously. Now I'll hand the gavel back over to you.
Now, what happens to the vice chair?
Well, technically, at the moment, the vice chair role is still occupied by Mr. Sammon, so there's no need to have an election on that. So now the agenda is yours.
Well, just. You can just follow along. So right now, it's general public.
So is there any public comment?
It is now time for general public comment. If you would like to make a public comment, please bring a speaker slip up to the clerk during this time. For those of you joining this meeting online, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom. Each person will be granted two minutes to speak. Does anyone have a public comment at this time?
We have one on Zoom.
When I call your name, you may unmute yourself and you may speak. I'd like to call Carlos.
Corla.
Clara. Clara Jekyll.
Yes, thank you so much. My name is Clara Jekyll, and I am a member of the Redwood City Police Advisor Committee, and I'm joining tonight to make an announcement about an event that we're going to be hosting, a youth town hall, which is going to be in November, on November thirteenth, from five thirty to eight P M. And it's for the larger Redwood City community, and we wanted to specifically invite youth and their families and neighbors from North Fair Oaks to join and attend the event. The theme is, what would it take to make Redwood City and North Fair Oaks a more fun, rich, and safe place for youth? And it's going to be held at Sequoia High School. So we really invite you all and hope that as many families and youth can join as possible on November thirteenth. Thank you.
Yeah. Is there any other public comment? There are no more public comments. Back to you, Chair.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
I'm going to have it back to you, Tim. Can you kind of guide us on that?
As I noticed that the motion was made by Mr. Esser and seconded by Mr. Sammon, so yeah. And then ask if there was any opposed.
Okay, we move on to the next item. Discussion of North Fair Oaks. Certificate trailer needs assessment, so we have tonight John Johnston, Fire Marshal of the Redwood Park Fire District. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. How are you? Excellent. First off, I need to apologize. The agenda topic is a little different than what's listed on here. But what I'm going to do is offer that we can have another presentation here where we can offer education about our complete community emergency response team, our education, training, and resources, so that we could actually have slides and maybe some demonstrations to show you the capabilities and what we are offering to the community. What I will let you know is that I've been serving the district here with the Menlo Park Fire Protection District, which serves North Fair Oaks for twenty-four years myself. So I know this community well. And when it comes to the CERT team, which CERT stands for Community Emergency Response Team, this has been training, education, and resource within the community here through the fire district for over twenty years. We were one of the first departments to really get that rolling within San Mateo County. And it, of course, has grown. We know that it is something that is nationwide. They got started by the Los Angeles Fire Department after seeing the effects of a large earthquake down in Mexico and going down and providing help and seeing how much community help really made it successful in saving lives. So what I would like to say is that through this program, if people are not really interested in being part of a community team, they can still be prepared. We offer what's called personal emergency preparedness or Red Cross Ready. We offer CPR, first aid. We also offer shelter training so that people can staff shelters that need to be brought together. We also offer Listos, which is our Spanish emergency preparedness class, which has really been taken off well. We have a local instructor here and has been really successful within the community. And we are really reaching out, trying to get even more languages, but of course, we need instructors. So I am actually kind of soliciting outright here that for those that are actually interested, one, in personal preparedness, but also maybe being an instructor, we would love to be able to have more instructors to reach out to the community and also in multiple languages. But when it comes to trailers, so what the CERT team does as we obtain more and more trained citizens to help out in the event of a large-scale disaster, which really what we are preparing for is a large-scale earthquake, that we would have equipment caches throughout the district that those trained community members would be able to access and have tools and resources that they've been trained to, to be able to provide additional assistance, because the fire district itself would not be able to provide a whole lot of service to a great number of people, as we will be taking care of the greatest need at that time. But as we know, volunteers, every time there's a disaster, are out there helping as quickly as possible. So one of the items that we are soliciting tonight, the trailers, is looking for locations or homes for some of these trailers in the future. As we purchase them and equip them, we are looking for, whether it be a church or a business, a location that would be able to give up in essence a parking space or an area and be able to make sure that it stays secure, you know, from vandals, et cetera, and that would be able to partner with the fire district and allow that to be available to the community. So that is one item that I would like to be able to discuss tonight or open up to the public to at least consider where we could put these trailers within the community. And then the other is looking at emergency caches that would be separate from that, which would be looking and partnering with the the county, partnering with Redwood City Fire Department, because obviously disasters don't see boundaries. Unfortunately, you know, our districts and fire departments do have boundaries. But looking at food, water caches, medical supply caches that would be available to help supplant immediate needs beyond maybe seventy-two hours for a disaster. So tho- those were my quick items, and so if there are any more questions or if you have discussion and remarks to the few items that I brought up. Yes.
My first question, thank you for sharing all of this. It's really interesting. Especially, you know, you live in this area, you're already grounded in Florida. Are there any incentives for churches or businesses to give up a parking spot or, you know, part of their property for these trailers?
Sure. The incentive that I would offer is all of our training is free. And so we actually try to encourage groups. So whether it's a, you know, a religious group, a business, we will come in and actually provide training to that group. And therefore, you actually have a nice resource in-house. And then so what we would be wanting to do is obviously train as many members within that church, business school, whatever it may be. And then you actually have now resources that you have members trained to right there on site. And so it's just like when you have an emergency at your home and you have the fire department right next door, you get that resource quicker. I'm going to say it's kind of the same way here, that now you're going to have a bunch of resources, tools, cooker, and you're educating your community right there.
Thank you. And a follow-up question, how many trailers are you?
We do not have that number yet because it's something that we're building out, and so it's going to be based upon how many trained community members we have and how many locations we can secure. But I don't have a limit at this moment, so because when you look at it, just within the Menlo Park Fire District, we have ninety thousand citizens. It's a lot of people, and so we want to be able to do the greatest amount for the greatest amount of people, so.
And is there a public affairs person or someone to assist with attracting people? Recruiter, recruit? People to recruit, like, I'm thinking of like, how do you get recruiters back to chat, community members, and would they work?
So we have right now Heather Keller. She's a community volunteer coordinator, and she's responsible for all of this education, training, and outreach. And so we have been connecting with a lot of community groups to offer this training and work to getting instructors, et cetera.
Okay, I will connect with her so we can make sure they know.
Perfect.
Thank you. She says, well, how much space is needed? Are we really just talking one parking space? Are we talking?
Yeah, it's a small trailer. It's not very large. Say one of those little tiny U-Haul trailers.
Oh, not that much. How easily can they be moved? Is it just hooking it up to a truck?
Yeah, well, we are trying to look at two different options. Obviously, a trailer that's on wheels, it's nice that it can move, but it doesn't necessarily need to move. But it also makes it easy for theft in some aspects. We are looking at the possibility of doing maybe a shed. So it may not have to be in a parking space. To do a shed or a, like a Conex box, which has different sizes. And I think if there's a means of doing a partnership with, hey, let's buy a Conex box, and if it has a divider, half of it's ours, and the other half benefits the business or church for their needs. I'm I'm open, because I want to explore ways, same thing, is what's going to be an incentive and make it work for the community in all best interest.
So are any issues with safety? There is a little bit of theft concern?
That seems to be a common thing. All, it doesn't matter where in the U.S. People see supplies and stuff, and it's just out there, especially if it doesn't get watched, which is why we're hoping, you know, whether it's security cameras or maybe it's in a place that is continually occupied, but it could help.
There's always been some open space on the Hetch Hetchy or whatever, whatever the utility group. Is it Spud or have we asked them to consider? Or would it be too heavy to, of a, you know, could it go on a spot along where utilities company owns land?
It's a possibility, but most of the time when you have utilities, it's behind a gate, it's secure, and only they have access. And again, we're looking for it where disaster strikes and the community is going to be able to have ready access.
Well, we all know it's going to be one of those things that we're so mad we don't have when we need it. Has anyone asked Stanford? They have lots of land.
I have not spoken with them yet, but I know we've worked with them in some other areas in the park, so. Yeah, we are looking for large partners.
One last question. I was getting, was going to try to get certified, assert training, and they keep telling me I should go with Redwood City. Doesn't matter if I go with Menlo Park or Redwood City. Should we? Because since North Fair Oaks covers both.
Yeah, so there's, there's two different aspects of that. When it comes to the training, you can do the training from either arm. The training is universal nationwide. But when it comes to joining a team, you want to be in the team that the fire district or fire department sponsors, so that you're in your neighborhood. And so that way you get to know your neighborhood team that's sponsored by that fire department. So obviously, if you're on the south side of the tracks, basically, you're in Menlo Park Fire District. And if you're on the other side, then you're Redwood City Fire Department. So that that's the only difference, but you can take your training either side.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. I've got a picture of a trailer from the Palo Alto CERT team. It's in the parking lot of the Reconado Library. But not sure if that's big enough for you to see it's. Yeah, and and actually, Conex, a trailer, whatever they come up with would work. I shared an email with this topic with Ever. I didn't want to do it council-wide, because that's like a Brown Act violation. But I know he, with his community association, has been working on disaster preparation, so I asked him the questions that Heather was talking about as far as her boundaries and I think, like, the county lot that we have with the mural is south of the railroad tracks, so it's in years.
It's in our district.
And she said that she was going to check with Santa Anthony's Church, and they got the Padua dining room. And that's a, that's nice, but it's the very southern end of North Fair Oaks versus being a little more central. And I thought the new county supervisor's district office has like four parking spaces that are never used, maybe at most one or two. And would make it harder for a new county supervisor to close the office if we had the meeting resource located right there, big old Conex. Where's that one? It's located right across the street from the mural parking lot.
Okay.
Like second. Yeah, it's a beautiful central location. And we could have an art contest to decorate once, and put the CERT symbols on it, and then also decorate. Yeah, the the county actually invested in some land. In addition to the parking lot, they picked up the old furniture building across the street, and then like this beauty salon building. Beauty Salon Building is the supervisor's district office. And the furniture store is the economic development place. So the county owns that, and because it's publicly owned, I think it would be easier than trying to grab a business to give up a parking spot, because the folks on Middlefield that own businesses, they're very protect, they're protective of what spots they do have.
Space is limited here.
And then if they lose like one on-street thing, it's like a big deal. And let alone like the one or two spots they got behind the building.
Yeah.
I took the CERT training through Menlo Park. I signed up a couple of years ago, and it was at the warehouse in East Palo Alto. And ideally, I would have met someone from my neighborhood, but I was the only person. There were people from East Menlo Park and East Palo Alto taking the class alongside me. I think there might have been one person from Atherton. The only reason I chose Menlo Park versus Redwood City was that they had the classes on Saturdays, and that was better with my work schedule, wouldn't have to take time off work. Redwood City is an excellent resource. And they send out this catalog every quarter of adult education classes, and there's a whole page on CERT training. And I think we should promote this throughout our district, and I I know Ever has done some stuff promoting this theme through his community association, but it's it's worth reinforcing to see if we can get at least, you know, three or four core volunteers, maybe some that's interested in radio, some of them that's interested in first aid, and and start like at least a block captain kind of thing, or we have around the trailer at least five or six people that are going to check in. But I appreciate you coming tonight, and this is great first step. My preference or suggestion is that it's publicly owned land versus private, because sometimes people put up fences and gates, and they, when you need it, the gate's going to be locked. You're not going to be able to get to the trailer. The earthquake, and the person's not going to come to work from wherever they live in the Central Valley. So that's that.
Or comments for members? So having no more comments for the members, we'll open up this to public comment, certainly public comments regarding this specific agenda item. Do we have anything?
No, no public.
Okay, no comment, and having no further discussion.
Thank you for thinking back. We really appreciate it. Have a great evening.
Okay, we'll move on to the next agenda item. The next agenda item, discussion and review of North Fair Oaks community plan and identify future key topics for discussion. This agenda item is under Councilmember George. So George, take it over.
Actually, everyone, I need to start still in some reason. But my setting is we're going to have an open discussion. This is in a multi-phase approach. We're not going to give this all down today. The goal is to just kind of step back. Hopefully, we're going to need some portions of it that were super important and useful to us, or we can kind of discuss that and figure out what topics would have taken deep wrong mix up. And if needed, we could have a second meeting with the county of the city and really have that next question. So I think today I will highlight the overview discussion of what's important and basically notice about what we need to do.
I I haven't read the plan. I looked at the slides they presented last meeting, and I I had a previously bound version of it that I didn't read all of, but I left it at a community event, and I haven't seen it since then. If there's a web link where I could read the the full thing, that would help me to actually do the homework I'm supposed to do and be able to talk intelligently. So all I know about the new revised plan is the high-level twenty thousand-foot view from the slides last month.
Anyone else doesn't have it? Please let us know that rest of the team has said it's under a product plan. Well, we'll kick it off. The first one that really stands out to me is is the economic development. It should be under Penix Chief. There are interesting ones here, such as setting up child training or just library. But when it comes down to getting funding for the actual initiative, how do we, how do we promote this to come together? Seems like some of these initiatives are partially completed out of its shape. So with this being said, I think we really find out in depth. What do you have to propose? What do you see? What do they have in mind? What's the timing for here to really attract businesses to play? That's, that's what's going to happen. A lot of these initiatives don't have enough funding or issue. I don't want to see this district just kind of shut down because.
So we're opening this to the members for discussion.
We can, or we can just use it as an option to take notes. It's city later. Open to anything.
It's on the table.
I'm going to throw out two topics for a deep dive. Housing and beautification. There's, there's a huge learning curve on getting into this report and understanding it. There's, there's a huge learning curve on getting into this report and understanding it. And a lot of the work's already been done laying out 10 or 20 years in the future. How we're gonna get to some of these goals, but I don't have a plan in front of me. But I know gentrification is accelerating. It's creeping up from the south and, um. People that have lived their entire lives are gonna be priced out and evicted. Uh, their landlords are gonna tell them they, you know, it, it, it's happening. And the, there's not an infinite supply of publicly funded affordable housing in the pipeline. We've got some stuff coming. But if there's a way to create more naturally affordable housing and to accentuate it. Because I wanted to, I wanna, it's like a social justice thing. Uh, when we're displacing the people that have built their lives here, their kids have gone to school. And suddenly you don't make enough to live here anymore. You need to move to crazy. That's not cool. Um. Part of the ADU thing is, is giving some of it some hope. But, um, there has to be more promotion. And i- if there was like a interest-free revolving loan program that in return for borrowing the money to build this ADU. You're gonna maybe make it ADA accessible and agree that, you know, if your loved ones or relatives aren't using it. It'd be available to anyone that lives or works in the, the district or the county as a preference. Uh, 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 there's some pieces missing. Uh, it seems like the solution in everyone's mind is that we just need to generate billions of dollars and build more affordable housing. And there's somewhere short of that that we need to tinker with because I think we're gonna have some lean gears ahead.
I like where your mind is at on this. But if it goes to a lot of would live here more, give housing. My personal feel is needing resupply. So where does supply was preventing developers from affordable housing market rate anyone. Building, we got plenty of, even regulations, policies, what is stopping?
Yeah, the, the natural property is to have a DJ house come in, certain management, and you can a million dollar house. And you can take a $2.18, $10 house and it'd be quick in and out. And that's what's happening going north and. Uh, no one's building five unit apartment complexes. And where you're getting ADUs bill before trying to charge maybe 80% of market rate compared to the high rise expensive stuff downtown. And it's, it sounds like a bargain, but it's not helping the people that live here already that have gone through a bad year or running.
Maybe a thought, just personal thought would be, we need some developers asking why, please, why aren't they trapped?
Yeah.
That makes the question knows what happened to Second Medicine. Nothing's happened. We, this was. They didn't get funding, so there's a big piece of land. Can somebody talk to the housing developer and try to get something switched in?
I can speak to that. That actually was affordable housing.
Market rate?
No, Edison.
Edison and Second we talked for.
And maybe I looked at it a lot in this respects to the sports points.
Now, that, that still hasn't been, this is further down. This is the one, um, further down. It was on the docket for how many years and nothing has happened. It's a big, it's a big trailer, the ones in the, in the triangle at the corner.
It's a walk nears the middle field and it's a parking lot with food trucks and heavy equipment. And it's been that for like decades and it's thriving as that. But it was in the pipeline to be developed as a high rise and it came to us because they had like a green thing. But nothing's happened as far as the magic building and that sounds like.
It could be a green space. It, I mean, there's so many things that it could be a parking lot, a green space. And it is set and done nothing, if I don't know.
You should ask them.
The person that owns it.
Yeah, then, then, then there we go back to, well, it's their land. They should be able to do whatever they want. They put market rate housing that does nothing for North Fair Oaks. So we're sitting here saying, let's do something for affordable housing. Let's get green space. Meanwhile, we have a lot of land that's been sitting there for years. It's a dump.
Well, we should ask them, why aren't they doing it? What is it? Is it us or policies? Is it our zoning or what is it that's causing it's about developed?
Actually, food trucks are economic stimulus. A lot of people that can't afford regular patients, they're renting and operating these trucks. And that lot is serving a function and supporting this ecosystem. Um, so I mean.
Ish, ish.
The, the person is making money out of the lot and they may not have money to build the high rise or develop or partner. I don't know. But we can ask the fire department, what is their application?
Speculate, but you don't know.
You're just not quite, you have a development, there's, there's all the reasons that they look at this. We can have a whole home on the whole day front, uh, they could sit there with city jurisdiction. But that, that is affordable housing. People can't get into the housing park any other way. And we have three trailer parks inside of our district. And I need to set two of them. And there's a third one that's kind of divided. I mean, it doesn't take a lot of money to clean up a divided trailer park and let them come back in and. And you're back at home.
Yeah, I think Supervisor did a great job with Baron, Baron Avenue. The housing complex along there was one of the best things that ever happened to North Fair Oaks. Something Supervisor did years ago. I'd love to see something like that happen at Second Medicine.
Uh, I think reading through this, what I'm struck with is how many recommendations, um. And policies conflict with other areas of policy. So like parking is a huge community identified issue. Yet how do we make it more attractive for developers? So slashing minimum parking requirements and so forth. So I was sort of left with how some of these things seem to be in conflict with other policies. And also, how do we decide when they, you know, put these are priorities in each of the categories? Where, where is the order of this needs to be done first? This are, how, where, what resources are we talking about to do some sort of prioritization? Because there's so much here. And it was like walking through a Las Vegas buffet when you're starving. And I was just like, where do we start first?
I also wanna comment in the executive summary on page five. One of the things, first thing that I think we as a council need to take a look at is. They want to establish an interdepartmental team to track and manage implementation of this material. So that seems to be a priority in my mind. It's who's going to be on that team to track anything that'll, anything else. If that are responsibility and if so, that's something council I think should focus on is tracking the success.
I looked, excuse me, I looked at that as well, Captain. And when I saw that, I thought of something similar to the neighborhood response team. So perhaps a group of county people that could, um, that could emphasize kind of the assistance programs that are available to people. And I'm thinking of things like renter assistance, services to assist with provision of temporary housing. Providing accessibility modifications for seniors, financial and other assistance on service providers, rehab and repair programs, things like. Local, state and federal homeowner assistance programs, perhaps your report app from the small business liaison. And a report app from the NFO district. So kind of create a secondary group, not so much, you know. Excuse me, we get sheriff, we get fire updates, we get sustainability, things like that. Focus more on the programs that the county offers to. Now, we can collect data on that. We can go back to the county and say, well, you know, here are areas, maybe we need a little more, a little more outreach to. To happen in terms of outreach and letting people know that the services are available.
Any further comment regarding this item?
I, I've got a suggestion that we make it a recurring topic for study sessions over the course of the year. The, every three months or so, we'll get a different chapter or section. I mean, cause it's, it's an education learning curve for us and it's also a refresher. By the way, where are we on these goals? Where, where have we been? Where are we now? Do the goals still make sense? That kind of thing. So, you know, every three months, maybe just check in and pick a chapter, do a deep dive.
Are you suggesting something like quarterly?
Yeah.
Quarterly.
So far, what I heard was non-development, housing identification, as well as priority.
I, I, I would like to add transportation to that. I know that we largely focus here on what's going on in Middlefield Road and, and it's fine. But there's a lot of other transportation concerns in the community besides the project of Middlefield Road. So I would like further discussion, um, regarding transportation as a whole.
I actually care about our life order and, uh. Community activation, festivals, events, any of those. I think that's a sense of identity that comes from doing these things that people appreciate and spend a lot of time. We need to reclaim that.
Your topics on the line or?
I guess I'm thinking when we're going through this, that our focus ought to be actionable stuff. Where are there areas in here where good city is identified and probably something that corresponds to the, we've discussed in bits. And, and frame that even context is something we can go to. Ask, but obviously, we'll talk about economic development. We had the small business liaison, let's do those. Policies to add to this for education, commercial beautification. Something I know the super. Let's get something. You know, talk about doing a survey and hearing if companies available. Besides, obviously, the business state is a voluntary program, destruction center. At least kind of, kind of kick that. I see that as kind of a final step. That'll stop the field road.
I've seen them later, they do a solid improvement, grant or serve. To finally activate the lots, which involves other special work and the drive of many customers. And they kind of like we go to you, let's, let's keep your new money and lighting scheme. We'll put aside some sidewalk table, whatever it is. And we do five businesses in a row and all of a sudden block goes divided to like, people are actually using them.
Think we want to be able to operate like we did the, the public assistance of the block. And we're probably talking about the same. We did to keep businesses alive. Maybe that's something we should consider.
Let's, I'm just assume restaurants. Let's say if the art of business cost, uh, put a nice sign in the display, they're, they're helping with too. We used to walk up and down. Yeah, but whatever the small business is.
Especially some of these refurbished buildings. I was driving up here, um, tonight and I noticed an attorney's office that it's like the same side. One of the corrugated. Sure, I'm going to push out something. It's now attorney's office. So, you know, it's the hand painted signs and stuff. Maybe they'd be receptive to some. I assume professionally done.
Looks like your idea about little fractional items. For that to work, we gotta go to this, find two, three, start things. Things that be derived. The timeline is a little bit of a success.
Parts that we buy in the next. The songs. In another car, we have a new apartment, uh, spring.
Get the thoughts right here.
I break up the report and assign certain chapters to people.
And I actually went through the whole thing. Just look through, look at things that kind of pop in a couple of which I mentioned now. I can, I can send my notes to staff and think before we, see. I can, so you guys, you guys can keep celebrating. I'll do that.
Need the chair. If, if people wanna do voluntary homework and summarize a chapter or two and send their thoughts. They can send it to like one email, like county staff. I think compile that list of voluntary homework and then redistribute it.
If, if it's your intention to share notes among each other in preparation for an agendized item, we can make that part of the board. Pack it and distribute it. It's perfectly legal for you to see, um, what's being provided in the board. So yes, send it to staff and staff will send it out as a single item. But we don't really wanna create an email chain where people are responding to each other.
That's why I suggested I'll send items to staff.
All right, well, um, having no more, um, discussion or comment on this particular item. We'll, uh, move on to the next item, which is the report out. Do we have a county executive report?
Wanna clarify whether or not we invited public comments on that item.
Okay. Okay.
Before we move on, is there any public comment regarding the item that we previously discussed on their review of North Barrows?
Members of the public, if you wish to comment on agenda item number six, please use the raise again feature on Zoom or bring a speaker slip to the clerk during this time. You'll be granted two minutes to speak at this time when your name is called. Do you know, I haven't been called back to you, Charlie.
Okay, having none, um, we'll move on then to the report out. Do we have a county executive report?
Josh will be taking.
Josh.
We have, uh, county deputy executive Adam Eli, I'll be reporting out. He only has one item to report out. He wants everyone to know that to promote pedestrian safety, Public Works has installed digital signage on Middlefield Road. To essentially warn our drivers, uh, to watch out for pedestrians. Believe there are two segments. I might be wrong, but there's definitely one right before the tracks. It might be still up.
Before the tracks?
Uh, digital signs are just right before the tracks. Uh, I believe they're on, uh, one is on Hurling Game and Middlefield. So if you're heading southbound, you'll see one just right before the tracks. Yeah. Yeah. I believe. Yeah. Then on behalf of Supervisor Slokan, who also appeared to have to report out. Uh, regarding the board of supervisors earlier this week, uh, they held its first, their first meeting, the new chambers. Not sure if everyone already saw the new chamber. But it's beautiful. And during the meeting, the board approved the final budget for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. The adopted budget totals five point two five billion dollars. And the majority of the funding will be allocated to addressing housing and homelessness, supporting children, families and seniors, enhancing emergency preparedness and improving mental health services. All of these are priorities of the board. The board also passed a resolution naming a new Samontail County Park at Tonita's Creek Beach. The Don Horsley County Park at Tonita's Creek Beach. And this is an owner of the late supervisor, Don Horsley, recognizing his lifetime of public service. We also have a couple of events coming up. Um, this Saturday, September twenty eighth, from ten AM to twelve PM at the North Far Oaks Library. We are celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. I put a flyer about the event on here in front of y'all. It's a free event. Bring anyone who wants one. I won't be attending that event. So, yeah. And then um, on Monday, September thirtieth, from six PM to seven thirty PM, we are hosting a Facebook Live event uh, discussing the importance of voting. The discussion will be in Spanish and English interpretation will be available. Next Monday, September thirtieth, we're also hosting our last office hour for this month at the Second Avenue and Middlefield Road District Office. And then finally, last event, um, November eighth, Friday, November, November eighth. Uh, we're hosting Sam, uh, the Samontail County Veterans Commission. We're hosting their ninth annual Veterans Recognition Lunch. If you plan on attending, I do have a flyer where it has a link for you to register if you are interested. And lastly, since it's election year, the Samontail County Registration and Elections Division uh, is now hiring for extra help to help with the upcoming presidential election. Uh, some of the open positions include voter center representatives and also ballot retrieval, retrieval specialists. They pay a guy for a temp job. So if you're interested, let me know. I'll be available for questions after. That is it.
Thank you, Josh, for your presentation. I would like to uh, bring to the table to my colleagues here. I would like a formal um, tour of the new facilities. Is there interest from the council members to do a formal tour? And and maybe I'll ask if uh, if Josh, Josh, because I know you don't have enough to do.
Sure.
Uh, if uh, if we could do a a a tour of the new facility.
We would be happy to.
Okay, let's let's arrange.
Yeah, can definitely arrange that.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we can do multiple tours, different groups. Sure.
Clarify that at the moment, um, the only body holding is in the new chamber is is the board. Um, so the planning commission and other agencies are still meeting in the old board chambers in the courthouse for now. But uh, that will change probably over the next month or so. Um, so in the short term, don't go expecting you're going to see the planning condition in the new space.
And then that a follow-up question to that, to our county deputy is, a- as long as we're not having any kind of discussions, we can go as a group to do this tour as long as we're not discussing business?
So my recommendation would be that you RSVP and see how many people you get, because if it's less than the majority, there's no problem at all. Um, and we can split you into smaller groups to make sure that you're not deliberating, um, even if that means you get two different tour guides. So if all of you are available at the same basic time, we'll just make sure that you're not in the same group. We'll we'll do it. We'll do it like the pros do it.
Okay. Well, we can also use duct tape. Okay, great. Any other comments to Josh? The estimation you said?
Is it possible to use the office if um, I could get some voter registration? Um, going in in North Far Oaks where I could use the office to post Saturday afternoon? Stop in, register to vote.
Are you talking about the little house?
Yeah.
Second, I think, yeah, absolutely. We are also, we are in the process of uh, scheduling our office hours for next month. So if you want to do that in one of our office hours, because we are also planning to do that. But yeah, yeah, we can, I I can follow up with you after the meeting.
Great. If there's no other comments or questions for Josh, we can move on. He covered the district floor report. Uh, now we'll move on to council members' report. Uh, George, anything to report out this evening?
I'll be traveling. I'm not here to talk, but these thirty days, starting October ninth. Uh, it's a family matter, but uh, all is well.
Okay, uh, Blair, do you have anything to report out this evening?
I extended a few things, like the kind of memorable, like the uh, supervisory candidates were listed for on Monday evening or what it took it? I only had the stamina for thirty minutes of the night in the face, and I came in and I saw the crowd. It's like sixty people of the press. And I listened to the candidates as long as I could. And there was an article in the Herald City Pulse that kind of summarized it. It's important, if you're gonna vote and consider going further down the ballot than the president and the Senate, when you actually vote for county supervisor. Uh, I'm not the door seat either candidate, and I think either would do a good job I selected. But it's important that we have a positive relationship. So I'm glad that they helped that in this facility and that they, because both candidates are reasonable, I think it's important that since the district moved all the way from Brimwood City to East Minlo and North Far Oaks, that this is not get, we don't get forgotten. And uh, so that's all I got is that.
Thank you. We'll move on to uh, Kelly, anything to share tonight?
I just wanted to quickly thank Kathleen for her service as chair and appreciate your leadership and your compassion and all the thoughtfulness you brought to the role. And that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, echo that. Thank you very much, Kathleen. Um, follow up on an item that before the council a couple of months ago, I believe it's been solved. It's the issue about parking at McDonald's. It looks like at least one or two of the red spaces are no longer there. Gosh. I'm just going by what I saw.
You can talk after. We can talk after. We can talk after the meeting.
And then the uh, the other thing is, um, my street is is finally at the top of the list for reconstruction. And the scale and scope of the project is substantial. Let's put it that way. If you're, if you're interested in drive down Far Oaks someday, you get to sixteen thousand.
Yeah.
The the effort involved in building gutters and new systems and stuff is my fault. Okay.
So I drive by it all the time just to see what we're in store.
It's it's much, much more disruptive. I mean, it's kind of fabulous when it's done. It's quite a project. A lot of earth being put into that. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Brooks. Uh, Kathleen, anything to report out this evening? If there's no further comment or reports, then we will uh, adjourn the meeting. But get a motion.
So move.
Second. Whoa, hi. Good evening, everyone. Thank you.